Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome everybody to tonight's City of Wildwood's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November 4th, 2019. On tonight's agenda, we have two information reports, two correspondence items, and one other item that's an update. Mr. Newberry, can I have a roll call of the commission members?
Commissioner Helfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Levitt.
Commissioner Cohn.
Here.
Commissioner Gragnani.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Here.
Commissioner Depler.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Chair Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Moving on to the minutes. Can I have a motion to either approve or amend the minutes? Motion, Commissioner Gragnani, second. Commissioner Beatty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have that. Does the department have any opening remarks? Okay. Mr. Newberry, moving on to public comment?
Yes, sir. First speaker card is for Ms. Vedvig.
Jean Vedvig, 16709 Clayton Road, Wildwood, Missouri, 63011. I wanted to just make a few comments regarding the Latitude North 38 information report that's going to be discussed later in the meeting. And I'll make some comments, but it's kind of hard to go up a... to make comments when you don't get to hear the discussion on the report until later. But I put some thoughts together, and one of the things that drew my interest was during the department request, there's a line in the document that says, "The department recognizes the Town Center Update Team has not completed its full review of the overall plan, but the original motion on this matter by the Planning and Zoning Commission did express a desire to expedite it for the purposes of assisting the developer and property owners through the zoning process." And I don't remember that this group wanted to expedite the matter, but if they did, so be it, but I just don't remember it that way. And my comments are, and this has been a long-going conversation. So if you change a designation from downtown to neighborhood general because of the location on the corner and the transition, you're creating the same situation you have just a few properties away. And the result of the change would be that it would still be residential next to downtown. If the change is made, you'll have residential on Main Street across from the Village Green space, removing any opportunity for commercial growth in the future. And I would ask if...I know that you all have studied Village Greens and green space, and if you've ever seen a Village Green space surrounded by residential. Typically, it's not. This also provide...this plan of this particular development provides for walls at the rear property lines of the homes to be built. So there will be walls on Main Street and walls on Crestview, as I understand it. I don't know why we would want to have walls built on a Main Street that we have encouraged the development from 109 to this city hall as a through street. There was also a comment made about it couldn't be downtown because of the low traffic counts. Well, right now, of course, there's going to be low traffic counts. The road doesn't go through. And it's my understanding that presently, it might even be a private road. So I would say that once the road was completed, traffic counts would change. And once the Village Green space would be planned out, there would be opportunity for our development. The prime is a really good example of a collaboration with the city and the developer by having all commercial on the first floor and mixed use or residential on the next floor up. So if the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city council, and the mayor did not have conviction 20 years ago, you would not have the heart of Town Center as we know it today. It wasn't easy. We should look at what we have and don't have...we don't have to look at what...we should not look at what we don't have, but we should look at what we have. We have a community college. We have a YMCA, multiple major grocery stores in our community, our own city hall, police station, and a community garden, and now a space for a Village Green, all right here. A premier community park, running and biking trails, providing services and entertainment for residents who lived here. A planned residential community in Town Center is what was planned and can be. Fortunately, sticking with the plan has proved to be a success, and residents will tell you they understand the mission and vision of a premier community like Wildwood. I'm not very active on social media, but what I do see is how much the residents like Wildwood, and they love the parks and the trails. The city of Wildwood, on behalf of the residents, has made significant investment in this area. Consider this: The city has built a city hall, we own our city hall, a police station, a public parking garage, a community garden, Main Street, and now a place for a Village Green. The community so enjoyed their open area before the...when the city was renting the property nearby. So the vision is coming together. I think you shouldn't give up on it yet. I think you should not give up on it. We need to support development, but we do not need to change a plan that is working, and I'm sure you can see that. Once the Village Green space and Main Street are completed, you will more than likely see how the downtown area will afford commercial development opportunities. Building a real community is not easy, but taking the easy way out does not build a real community. There should be a true benefit to the city before any changes in our plans should be made. I think it's imperative that we take a look at that. And I understand the complication that you might feel of the transition area, but no matter where you go, you're going to have that transition area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Travis?
David Hudson, 18068 Babler Woods Road, 63005. This is regarding PZ 15-17. Thank you, P&amp;Z Commission members and Director of Planning, Mr. Vunich, for considering the health and welfare of Wildwood citizens as part of the CUP process. I'm grateful that the water samples are being tested, but the results of these tests should be evaluated in context. Independent testing experts pointed out to the commission that the tests should be performed in the middle of the summer when extended sunlight and warm temperatures stimulate algae and pathogen growth. My understanding is that ARDL was prepared to take water samples at such time, but the petitioner did not allow access to the property. ARDL access was delayed by over two months. My understanding is that the petitioner then did not allow ARDL to take the planned samples from the lake water. No deep-water sample was allowed. The delay and lack of deep-water sampling will cause the test results to not accurately reflect potential health hazards or growths seen on the waterfall in the August 15 photos that I presented earlier to the commission. The lake water should be treated per the CUP condition. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Newberry?
I have no further comment cards, sir.
Mr. Chair. With your permission and the commission's, just to advise you, Ms. Vedvig made a comment about an expedited return of Latitude North 38. At the September 4th, 2018 meeting, a motion was made by Mayor Boland, seconded by Commissioner Lee, to postpone final action on the item until after the upcoming committee that will review and potentially update the Town Center regulating plan had made its recommendation. Also, as part of this motion, the commission would direct that group to review this particular tract of land as early in its process as possible. So those are from the approved minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Shall we move on to old business?
PZ 16-19, Shad Seifert, 1626 Garden Valley Drive, Wildwood, Missouri, 63038. Care of Power Home Solar, 209 Hughes Lane, St. Charles, Missouri, 63301. A request for a conditional use permit in the NU...excuse me, in the R1, 1-acre residence district, street address 1626 Garden Valley Drive, locator number 21V130181, for the installation of roof-mounted solar panels which are to be so situated on the dwelling as to be visible from an adjoining roadway. This request is to be reviewed in accordance with Chapter 415.110 R1, 1-acre residence district regulations of the City of Wildwood zoning ordinance, which establishes standards and requirements for the installation of solar panels. The requested permit is required due to the panel's placement on an area of the dwelling's roof which is visible from the abutting roadway.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you may recall, approximately one month ago, a public hearing was held regarding this particular solar panel installation in the Garden Valley Farm subdivision. At the public hearing, Ms. Seifert and a representative of the solar installer spoke of the need to place certain panels on the dwelling's roof so as to be visible from adjoining or adjacent roadway, in this case, Garden Valley Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission questioned the placement and requested that the petitioner consider relocating as many of the panels, if not all, to the rear of the dwelling so as not to be visible from the adjoining roadway. Over the course of the past several weeks, that has been occurring between the petitioner and the provider of the solar panels, and tonight, a plan has been presented as part of the packet of information that indicates that the solar panels are no longer visible from the street. The solar panels have been moved to the rear elevation, so to speak, of the roof, and the number has decreased, but the relative square footage is comparable. This particular layout of solar panels no longer requires a conditional use permit because, again, they are not visible from the adjoining or adjacent roadway. Therefore, the department is respectfully requesting this matter be withdrawn.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. And then a motion? Commissioner Beatty? And seconded by Councilmember Werther? We can do a voice vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
Mr. Chair, the department would like to commend the Planning and Zoning Commission for the input it provided. Obviously, that input took seed, and we have a proposal now that I believe the trustees, in talking with them, feel is much improved, as does the City of Wildwood. So thank you.
Mr. Newberry? PZ 11-19?
PZ 11-19, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, 16860 Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040. A request to review Section 415.030 definitions, Section 415.400 sign regulations general, Section 415.410 sign regulations FP, PS, NU, and all R districts, Section 415.420 sign regulations for all C and M district, Section 415.430 subdivision information signs, and Section 415.440 temporary signs, specifically for the purposes of considering possible changes to certain existing regulations to address comments and concerns for members of the public regarding their timelines and applicability, and to review recent relevant legal developments regarding the same, all words.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, this particular request that is being presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission by the Department of Planning and to a larger degree, the city attorney, is not new to you. As you reference the information report, you can see that the Planning and Zoning Commission has held three work sessions just on this particular topic. The first of those work sessions, for the most part, was a review of the current sign regulations. The second and third work sessions were more discussion or interaction between the commission members, the city attorney, and the Department of Planning about potential changes, concerns, et cetera, the input that both the city attorney and the department needed from the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the conclusion of the work session two weeks ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission was asked by the department if it thought another work session would be appropriate or not, and the consensus, as was taken by the department from that question, that was that the commission was ready to proceed forward and see what the schematic of an ordinance for new sign regulations would provide. Tonight, the department is presenting to the Planning and Zoning Commission 15 key points relating to the sign regulations. These key points reflect what I believe is the comments from the public hearing, the three work sessions that were held, and other information that has been developed as part of that process. If the Planning and Zoning Commission concurs with these 15 key points, the city attorney, Mr. Newberry, and I will then know exactly what regulations need to be changed, what regulations need to be eliminated, and what regulations need to be added. The approach that the department is presenting tonight is not the draft regulations for signage. It is the department's attempt to gain consensus on these 15 items before the city attorney, Mr. Newberry, and I spend what will appear to the department a great deal of time refining what we have available at this time. The department wants to just very briefly touch upon those 15 key points in summary. The proposed regulations as the current sign requirements will allow for a variety of types. We will continue to address both ground-mounted and wall-mounted types, but offer a variety of opportunities, such as projection signs like Benedetto's on Main. The signs will be divided into two main categories: ground and wall-mounted types. They will be classified by zoning district designation so as to ensure they are content-neutral. And so, again, we'll have a differentiation by how they are mounted, not content, and we will basically establish regulations by zoning district designation. Again, remembering that in the landmark action of the Supreme Court in 2015, they treat, at least it appears, commercial signage different than residential signage, and certainly signage in the public right-of-way. Thirdly, the maximum size of a ground-mounted sign in any situation will be 50 square feet, again, being consistent with what has been applied for the last 20-plus years. The department believes, from the comments received by the...by it from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a reduction or an increase at this stage, given the number of ground-mounted monument-type signs, would be inappropriate. In terms of wall-mounted signs, no greater than 30 square feet, and that those wall-mounted signs must be offset from the facade where they are to be attached by a minimum of one inch. The sign regulations would allow a range of lighting options, but again, in Town Center area, external sources would only be allowed, and that's consistent with the application that we've had to date. The sign regulations would allow for height and width consistent with...consistent with current requirements for ground-mounted types, meaning that height would be 10 feet at maximum and width would be 10 feet at maximum. Now, remember, in the context of a maximum size of 50 square feet. The reason being is that there is a relationship between roadway width, roadway speeds, roadway volumes in terms of traffic, and certain heights and sizes are necessary just to accommodate minimal visibility or the visibility necessary for safe-turning movements. The total number of signs would be based upon number of frontages, corresponding frontages, but no more than two. This is a change that the department believes is important, and that relates to the placement of ground-mounted type signs on a particular piece of property. At this time, ground-mounted type signs in residential districts must adhere to the structure setback requirements of the underlying designation. So in a non-urban area with an institutional use, the sign oftentimes has to be placed at 50 feet from the roadway, and depending on the right-of-way width and the placement of the actual driveway...drivelanes within that right-of-way width, the sign can be ineffectual. The alternative in what is being recommended tonight is that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve placement based upon a signed package. That will allow 10 of you, along with the applicant and the department, to make the best judgment of what an appropriate setback would be based upon site characteristics, sign size, the roadway which is...which the property adjoins, traffic patterns, et cetera. The regulations would accommodate multiple wall signs on multi-tenant buildings, and again, this would be consistent with current regulations, but no more than two representations in association with any single tenant, any multi-tenant building. The sign regulations allow fewer exemptions, as you referenced the matrix that was provided for the last two work sessions. The sign regulations would address the ongoing condition of materials and their respective deterioration relative to free-speech type representation. Again, this may be the most controversial of all, but again, if a sign is deteriorated or fallen or lain in the street, obviously, it must be addressed from a public safety standpoint. Again, how best to define that? I'll turn to our city attorney eventually and ask him to help. The sign regulations will protect the public rights-of-way, period, as we do now, we will do in the future. And finally, there are more signs to be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for action than to the Architectural Review Board. The rationale with this particular action is that the component of signage is more so a representation of placement on the lot, the characteristics of the area where the lot is located, and the background that the Planning and Zoning Commission develops through the process, particularly in commercial settings and institutional locations. And so, from that perspective, the department believes the Planning and Zoning Commission may be the best group to review sign packages on, let's say, a day-to-day basis. And then finally, there are much greater prohibitions in terms of signage than before. These are the 15 key points that the department has identified from the comments, as mentioned, from the series of work sessions and public hearing, and tonight, the department is seeking an endorsement of them so the draft ordinance can be prepared for the consideration of the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, Mr. Chair, the department is again recommending the 15 key points. Those key points will be developed into a draft set of sign regulations, and ultimately, those sign regulations in draft form will be reviewed by this body on multiple occasions. Thank you, and after a motion, or the floor is open for a discussion. Mr. Young, Mr. Newberry, and I are available for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I'll open this up for a motion, and we can lead into discussion. Mayor Boland?
So I don't want to make a motion at this point, but I just want to say, my recollection is that this started on a very narrow basis with a Supreme Court decision, and then it's sort of got expanded, and now we have these 15 things. And I guess, I'm not sure that I disagree with any of them, but I think that it might be helpful to have a little more specificity with respect to exactly what's going to be changed vis-à-vis the...in comparison to the current sign regulations. But principally, my biggest concern, as I've made known previously, is anything that would in any way allow the LED electronic signs that we see on Manchester and other municipalities, I don't think they have any place here. So I guess before I would make a motion on anything, I have a question, and that is...it's a two-part question. Number one, is it the case that if we move forward, that it is...LED electronic signs absolutely will not be part of that, number one? And number two, how difficult would it be to get some, at least, broad understanding or presentation of the commission as to exactly what we would be going down the road of in terms of authorizing as potential changes in comparison to our current sign regulations? Because they seem to have largely worked pretty well so far in general.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I do believe the current sign regulations have been very effective, and the recollection of the department relative to the origin of this discussion is primarily threefold, and I will ask the city attorney to correct me. First and foremost, as you know, we are in litigation with a resident over the actions of the city relative to free speech and political signage. And as part of that, an initial set of recommendations were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration, and ultimately, those recommendations relative to... Commission for consideration, and ultimately, those recommendations relative to very specific types of signage were forwarded to City Council, and City Council deferred action upon it. The City Council then, item two, directed the city attorney and the department to do a more comprehensive review based upon concerns about free speech and the third component, the Supreme Court decision involving Gilbert, Arizona, and how signage must be content-neutral. So the expansion started from a very kind of defined and concise effort to address two components of the sign regulations, living signs and then signage relative to the right-of-way. It expanded per City Council to be more inclusive of all sign regulations, and then once that occurred, we began looking at the Supreme Court case, and it has set the landscape since that point in time. The intent of the department's matrix, that is part of the information report, indicates flashing, animated, those types of signs are prohibited. And so I believe electronic reader boards, those types, would not be allowed. And we can certainly be much more specific if the Planning and Zoning Commission would like. We can call those out very specifically in the prohibitions, because we've expanded the prohibitions, as you know. Mr. Young, did I capture that process or?
No, I agree with the director in his statement, but I would simply, I think, add, from my perspective and assisting with the drafting, I think what the intent here is is to try to take what the city currently has and review that and revise that under the current state of constitutional analysis as we understand it with the recent Supreme Court decisions. But in terms of adding anything new or making lesser restrictive analysis or lesser restrictions for specific sign types, that would not be done without express direction of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I could just follow up. Joe, I guess, and John, the item of the 15 that caused me to pause is number six, the range of lighting options. I'm not aware that Supreme Court case or anything else requires us to reexamine lighting options. So I mean, if you're saying that, you know, going forward, this is not something that is going to specifically allow the LED electronic signs, that fair enough, but that one just sort of tripped me up relative to exactly what we need to be doing and not expanding the scope beyond what's necessary of the moment, because I don't think we want to open Pandora's box. Thank you.
Councilman Werther?
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Vunich, when you get a -- I know you're making some notes there, I'll allow you a second to catch up.
Thank you, sir.
Did that finish? No, no, not a problem. In item nine, this particular item, as I was reading through it, I understand the desire and the intent of having the Planning and Zoning Commission set, really essentially set the location regardless of setback, building setbacks in underlying zoning districts. I think actually we've been pretty good about making accommodations for that going over our history. The only thing in there, and I realize it's in there later on regarding item 14, I would think something in nine would also reference to right-of-ways in terms of ensuring that we're not, you know, violating right-of-ways in there in some way, shape, or form. And I realize 14 gets to it in total, but if there's a reference to it, it would seem to -- because that was the first question that came to mind as we were talking, as I was reading through that. It was like, okay, but what about right-of-ways, you know, streets and so forth, and how far, you know, do we have? And I hearken back to Wildwood Historical Society and their particular predicament.
Right.
So those are the things that came to mind, so if they just tweaked that. Otherwise, I was fine with the 15.
And again, the rationale, I was trying to be brief in the presentation, seldom I am, but I was trying, is that the Board of Adjustment, and Mr. Young attends those meetings, does not see a great number of variances for ground-mounted signs with -- in residential districts, but they see at least one or two a year. And typically, it's a setback variance because in the case that Councilmember Werther has mentioned, if the Wildwood Historical Society were to place its sign as required by current code, it would be well into the property and in many regards would probably be 20 feet in height, just to be even, so to speak, with the grade of the road because of the slope of their site. And so the thought was, why not, instead of sending it to the Board of Adjustment, which gets a quick snapshot of the situation, have it come to Planning and Zoning Commission, which in the case of a situation like the Wildwood Historical Society, you, the group has background because you granted a conditional use permit. So you have a better reference point from the past to work toward the future. But I'll take a look at number nine, and we can come back.
Mr. Vunich, I have a comment, kind of tag-teaming on Mayor Boland's comment.
Please.
But just to be clear on this, LED is the light source, and I think where we want to be on this is the animated signage. We kind of frown on that, so 10 years from now, LED may be old news, and we have a new technology for the light source. So I'd kind of like to add the animated component to this. If anybody else objects, you can speak up, but I think that's where this needs to go as how we voted in the past. So in the light source itself, I think you should leave open, because that technology's always evolving.
Well, the thought of the department was, again, anything that flashed, animated, or otherwise moved would be a prohibited type sign. We'll add the actual term "animated" to the language. But in terms of the source of lighting, we were not going to limit that, because the light source can be treated in primarily three ways. We can make it external, put it on a gooseneck with a shield, and point it toward the intended target, the sign. We can do backlit, which the lettering is opaque, so the light bounces off the opaque source, bounces then off the elevation where the sign is attached, and backlights the signage. And then there is internal. Only a few locations in town center allow internal lighting, such as Dearburg's Town Center, but in the residential areas, internal lighting of ground-mounted signs or wall-mounted types are allowed. So the intent again was not to limit the light source, but to ensure that we would not have situations like the city of Baldwin, where you can be on a portion of Manchester Road and a flashing light makes you either think it's a police car or something else.
Commissioner Gregg Nani?
Yes, Mr. Vunich, I have a question and a comment. I had the same concern that Councilman Werther had about the setbacks, and you've adequately answered that. I guess just from my knowledge or update, the sign that Living Word put out on 100, how big is that monument sign?
Well, the good news, it did not receive a variance or a waiver to the setback requirement. So there's the edge of the right-of-way for Route 100, and then there's a 50-foot separation from that edge to the face of the sign. The sign is approximately 30 square feet larger in size, and in terms of height, an additional two feet. So it's roughly 78 square feet versus 50 square feet and 12 feet instead of 10 feet.
So it's 28 square feet bigger?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's about a 30 percent, or well, actually, a 50 percent increase.
Yes, if you base it off a 50-square-foot size, they were granted almost one, well, as you mentioned.
Yeah, okay. Because I know there was talk initially that it was going to go in the right-of-way.
That was the desire of the representatives from Living Word Church. The department emphasized to those representatives it cannot be placed in the right-of-way, and they went to the Missouri Department of Transportation and I believe got the same answer.
Okay, because I know they said originally, I was here at the ARB, and they said that they had approval to do that, and...
I mean, just from a liability standpoint, placing a private sign in public right-of-way on a limited-access arterial roadway, I just don't see a happy ending to that story.
No, I don't either. And I do like the idea of it coming here rather than ARB, so thank you.
Councilman Werther?
Yes, if there aren't any other questions, I'll make a motion to go ahead and that we proceed moving forward with the 15 points that have been outlined by the department for development of the draft regulations.
Second by Commissioner Gregg Nani.
And Mr. Chair, to the maker of the motion, that would include electronic message boards, animated signs.
Sure.
And the public right-of-way comment.
Right.
And before the vote is requested, I just want to emphasize that these are the 15 guiding points. We will bring back, the city attorney and Department of Planning will bring back to the commission a draft set of regulations. I would suspect that'll take at least one or two meetings before a letter of recommendation is prepared. So I want to assure the commission members, you'll not get a letter of recommendation and be expected to act upon it. There's several intervening steps before we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Rule call, vote?
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Boland?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Mr. Newberry, will you read new business item?
Yes, sir. A request for the ongoing operation of an existing telecommunications tower and facility authorized by PZ 4-98 AT&amp;T Wireless Services, Inc., conditional use permit in the NU non-urban Residence District, east side of Joe's Way, north of Valley Road, under a one-year renewal allowed by existing conditions of the site-specific permit, Ward 2.
Thank you. Mr. Newberry, Mr. Vunich?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I don't get it in that. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, approximately two weeks ago, the Department of Planning presented a renewal request for a conditional use permit that governs a telecommunications facility on Joe's Way. The department prepared a favorable report regarding the annual extension based upon compliance by the tower's owner to the conditions of the permit. During the discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission noted that there is a second telecommunications facility immediately to the south, and that facility is a disguised support structure, a tree. The commission noted that that particular tower was not receiving the same level of maintenance as the tower that is owned by Crown Castle or the subject of the request, and postponed action on that particular extension to allow the Department of Planning to determine ownership and then contact the owner regarding steps to address maintenance. The two facilities have two separate owners. The tower that is shown in the slide is owned by Crown Castle, a major corporation that owns telecommunications facilities across the United States. The disguised support structure, the tree, is owned by a company called Vertical Bridge. The Department of Planning contacted Vertical Bridge, spoke to a gentleman initially that completed a service ticket for the maintenance and upkeep of the facility. The department talked to a representative today that is in charge of the maintenance scheduling, and the individual noted that the ticket has been completed, it is on the schedule. Depending on weather conditions, the painting may take longer than anticipated due to cold weather, but they will do a precursory inspection, and they promised to have it done sometime no later than spring of next year. So the efforts on the part of the Planning and Zoning Commission will eventually lead to the painting of the disguised support structure and the replacement of any damaged limbs or branches onto the structure itself. I'm confident that Vertical Bridge will address it. The gentleman I talked to today seemed sincere in his desire to address the city's concerns, but again, noting the oncoming winter season, didn't believe that the painting would probably be accomplished anytime in the near term. Acknowledging that there are two separate owners, and the Crown Castle facility is in compliance with the conditions of the permit, the department is respectfully requesting the annual extension for an additional 12 months, be authorized by the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Have a motion. Commissioner Helfry?
I make a motion to approve.
Second by Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Gregg Nani?
Mr. Vunich, will then, in the future, will we address both towers each year?
No, ma'am.
We will not?
The disguised support structure did not require a conditional use permit under the regulations adopted by City Council. If it's a disguised support structure, it's an administrative action to authorize, and the Planning and Zoning Commission does not have a role.
So how, so in the future, how will we make sure that it is maintained properly?
I think from this point forward, whether it's Mr. Newberry, somebody else, myself or somebody else, when we do the annual extension review for the Crown Castle facility, we'll take a quick look at the...
That's what I'm asking. I'm not asking about renewing the CUP. I'm just saying to make sure that it is maintained. And the other question that I had is that when I was out there, the original tower that has the CUP has the lats in the gate so that you cannot see in the gate, the other one does not. Are we going to ask them to do that also there?
I'd have to investigate what is, what was originally approved on the set of plans submitted for the disguised support structure that was required, then yes, I'll add that. I'll contact the gentleman I talked to today and add that.
Go ahead, go ahead. I can't remember, but I do think the fence has it, but not the gate.
I'll check the approved plans, and if it's shown on the approved plans, we certainly can require it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Werther?
Thank you. I'll just go ahead and make my normal declaratory statement that I'll be abstaining on this particular item since I am employed by the telecommunications industry.
Seeing no further comments, we have a motion on the floor. Travis, will you rule call, vote?
Commissioner Cohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Abstain.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at the next available meeting, I'll let you know what I found out with regards to the plan sheets.
Thank you.
Mr. Newberry? Moving on to PZ 5.5A and 5A B through 18...
Moving on to PZ-5.5A and 5AB through 18, latitude north 38.
An update and recommended direction regarding PZ-5, 5A, and 5B-18, latitude north 38, TB Realty and Development, Inc., care of Tony Bosworth, 2642, State Route 109, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040. A request for modifications to the town center regulating plans designation of two properties that total 2.84 acres of area, which are located at the southeast corner of Etherington Road and Crestview Drive, from their current categories as downtown district to the neighborhood edge district. Accompanying the aforementioned regulating plan modifications is a request for a change in zoning from the NU Non-Urban Residence District to the R4 7,500-square-foot Residence District, Town Center Neighborhood Edge District, with a planned residential development overlay district for the same tract of land, again, being located at the southeast corner of Etherington Road and Crestview Drive. Locator numbers 23V 210140 and 23V 210151, street addresses 2442 and 2448 Etherington Road. Proposed use: a total of 12 detached single-family dwellings with common ground and required public space areas, Ward 8.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the department has prepared a report, not necessarily a typical information report regarding this particular matter. The rationale for it being identified as an information report relates to its location on the inactive agenda, and that was after public hearing and after action on a series of submittals of information reports to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, it's the placeholder, so to speak, that required it to be identified as an information report. The intent of the report is very simple from the standpoint of the department. The Planning and Zoning Commission referred the matter relating to latitude north 38 to the Town Center Update Team. The Town Center Update Team had yet to be formed or hold a meeting when this particular item was referred to them, and, over the course of the last year, the Town Center Update Team has been on an educational effort relative to the Town Center Plan, its five major components, the areas associated with Town Center, what's developed, what's not developed, et cetera. This past September, the Town Center Update Team did make a recommendation to alter the two properties associated with latitude north 38 from the downtown district to the neighborhood general district. That action was formally voted upon during a meeting under a roll-call action. With that particular action, and knowing the intent of the Planning and Zoning Commission by its motion over a year ago, the department is bringing forward the Town Center's recommendation, Town Center Update Team's recommendation, and respectfully requesting that this matter be scheduled for further discussion at a future meeting. Knowing, again, that the matter has now been in discussion for over a year of time, the department does still believe it can be scheduled sometime in 2019 for re-introduction to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Is there a motion or a discussion? Commissioner Helfry?
I have a question about timing. So, and please correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that the Town Center Update Team made their recommendation, and then from, but that's not anything necessarily official, that whatever recommendations are made, then go to City Council? Is that correct?
First, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Versus? And then, the City Council. So, nothing is, no zoning changes have actually been made, nor will they be official until the Planning and Zoning votes for it and the City Council. Is that correct?
Actually, since it's a land use change, and in the past, the Planning and Zoning Commission grants the change, and the City Council can either endorse and ratify or not approve it. But at the end of the day, the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission affects the color of the parcel of ground relative to the regulating plan.
Okay. So, then, my question is, the Town Center Update Team won't officially have their recommendations formally presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission until when?
Could be well into spring of 2020.
So, then, my question to you is, if we put this on the agenda in 2019, would we even be able to make any decision on it because nothing has been officially? But am I making sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to hand it off.
And quite frankly, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not need to forward this matter to the Town Center Update Team. It's completely in the opinion of the department in your purview. A formal request was made, a fee was paid, an application was submitted. There were differing opinions on the department's recommendation, but at the end of the day, the regulating plan change was not supported by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but an opportunity was provided to have a third party, so to speak, review it. They have reviewed it. You're not obliged to adhere to that recommendation, accept that recommendation, but I believe at the end of the day, it is appropriate for the consideration of the matter by the Planning and Zoning Commission. When that occurs is entirely within your purview, not the department's. That is why it's bringing you the first step, a request to schedule for consideration. It has not asked for anything else tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to go further with this and put it on our schedule.
Second by Commissioner Beatty.
And just as a point of information, your action to schedule, it does not mean you're endorsing the Town Center Update Team's recommendation. It is just that, under your motion, as was read tonight, you wanted a recommendation from them. There was no parameters on when that recommendation would be, either as part of their review or the final report, and that it be done as soon as possible.
Seeing no further comments, a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohn?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I were the partner on this, took some pictures of the tree, if you want to see him. I didn't realize, so...
I just put him up there.
Yeah. Oh, there. So, thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Newberry, can you give us an update on PZ-15-17?
Update on PZ-15-17, Babler Farms LLC, care of Tom Roberts, 550 Lori Lane, Wildwood, Missouri, 63005. Conditional use permit in the NU Non-Urban Residence District for a 59.9-acre tract of land that is located at the terminus of Lori Lane. Locator numbers 20X 630015 and 20X 630024. Street addresses 500 and 550 Lori Lane. Authorized conditional use, an existing large water feature, lake, and associated waterfall structure, as defined by Section 415.030 of the City of Wildwood's zoning regulations. The large water feature is 3.4 acres in size, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it has been a bit of time since the Department of Planning has updated you regarding the water testing in association with the item Mr. Newberry just read into tonight's record. The Planning and Zoning Commission, I am sure, is aware that it authorized water testing of the large water feature, as well as the waterfall structure, a while back. That testing took place just recently, in the middle part of October, and the testing did entail the waterfall structure and a single location in the large water feature. The test results have yet to be forwarded to the department and the city, and the department just wanted to update you that it is its expectation that those results will be delivered to the city of Wildwood in the next week or two. I do have a further detail. Dean Dickerson of ARDL Incorporated was the individual that did the testing for the city of Wildwood at the Roberts property. In an email response to the department's inquiry about the status, he did note that the test results for the pathogens had been completed, and the pathogens panel was clean. And so, from the perspective of one of the three components, the other two being the Beck ID and the chemical analysis, the first appears to be within parameter. And that's my phrase, not ARDL Incorporated. But as soon as that test analysis is complete and available, it will be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission and all interested parties. And so, the department appreciates your patience. It's been a long process, but I think we're very near the completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Any comments? Councilman Werther's motion, the second. Commissioner Simpson? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned.
Thank you all very much. We couldn't do it without you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.